Excuse me? Okay. Hello, can we bring a glass? Does this work? We have such a large crowd here. You have to quiet everyone down. Uh, thank, thank you for coming. Uh, what I wanted to do was open up the public hearing for the FY two thousand twenty-five Medfield Public School Budget. And um, I'll, I'll start with a roll call. Tonight is here.
Michelle Kirkby here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Fraschella here.
And Leo is not here and he is not on Zoom?
Correct.
Alright, okay. Okay, great. And just um, point of order, really, I think we're, we're gonna walk through the presentation. Uh, Dr. Morrison will do that shortly. We'll take a um, first set of questions from the school committee. Uh, I think, you know, you ca- you, we may ask questions during if, if that's okay unless it gets, you know, there's a great deal of them. Then we will open it up for anybody in the public for questions. Um, what's different about this than, than regular school committee meetings, I think um, there, there may be more discussions as, as those questions come up. Um, you know, continue questions from the school committee, if there are any. Uh, we would then close the public forum. Uh, we would then take a vote on the budget when that happens. Uh, so far, the budget is something that uh, Dr. Morrison and the schools really have been working on. They say the word own. But we would take a vote where it becomes the school committee's budget. We would continue to work um, both with the schools and with the towns and try to get to a point where we feel confident that we have a budget that the town would approve um, in the town meeting. So, just a reminder, um, if I didn't get that right, let me know. But uh, tha- that's the process. That, again, thanks for coming and uh, with that, I'll ask Dr. Morrison to walk through the material.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, those of you who are here, we appreciate it. Always liked the opportunity to pr- to pr- present the um, fiscal year budget to the school committee and to the public. A lot of work has gone into this since we started in late October and early November. And has, have gone through a, a pretty lengthy process to get to this point. And I know that at the December school committee meeting, I was able to give you that initial draft, the school committee, which um, had a really large increase in it. And we've been working really hard to get that increased down. So, um, I will go through the slides and happy to answer any questions, but I think it's fairly informative as we go through. I s- always start off with some really important background information, especially for folks who aren't familiar with school budgets or the process. Superintendent is listed in the law as the, the budget officer. And the three general areas of responsibility for the superintendent as budget officer will be budget preparation, budget presentation, and budget administration. And tonight's budget is often called the superintendent's recommended budget. And there's no official FY twenty-five budget until the Medfield School Committee votes. And hopefully you folks will vote this evening to accept this. Um, if the bu- if the budget is voted tonight, it's submitted to the town, but it's not necessarily the final budget. I think that's something that is really important to understand is that this, this is an evolving process and really sometimes doesn't finish until right before town meeting. Uh, but whatever the number is tonight, tonight probably will not be the number that is shared with the town to town meeting. Changes are still made after the school committee votes and, and the, the budget organization and the chart of accounts um, is assigned by DESI. So sometimes we go through the budget, things don't make a lot of sense the way they're organized. And that's because we do the chart of accounts that DESI recommends to us, uh, which helps us at the end of the year when Michael has to do the end of the year report. Uh, they require a certain chart of accounts and process uh, to, to complete that report. Important budget terms as we go through this presentation, uh, chapter seventy of the state funds that are earmarked for education. Those funds go directly to the town of Medfield, they do not come to the school department. Um, circuit breaker is a state reimbursement for special education costs. The state establishes a threshold of cost and anything that we spend over that, uh, we get reimbursed. Typically, last couple of years been great, it's been seventy-five percent reimbursement. Uh, but we've also seen as low as forty-two percent. Uh, back in uh, probably FY oh-nine, FY ten, in those years, um, circuit breaker was not uh, fully funded. And the interesting thing about circuit breaker too is the addition of transportation that's been in the last couple of years, which has been a great um, addition and change that the legislator ma- legislature made uh, during this process. So that is part of uh, circuit breaker at this point. Collective bargain agreement or CBAs, and that's the contracts we have with our teachers, teacher assistants, custodians, secretaries, and cafeteria workers. Steps, lanes, percent increase in longevity, and that's the pay structure that you see in the CBA. Um, step is a yearly increase on the salary grid, lanes are increased based on uh, degree attainment, and that's horizontal. Uh, percent increase is the amount added to the base and longevity is bonus time, bless you, bonus time, um, accrued in Medfield. Uh, full-time equivalent is FTE, you'll see that throughout the uh, pr- presentation. That's a full-time employee or a fraction of a full-time. Uh, level service budget is the same people and same programs. This budget really isn't much more than a level service, there's a couple of additional um, positions that are in there. But it's essentially a level service budget that uh, keeps the same people and programs in the district. And then there'll be a couple of slides at the end in which we talk about our capital budget, uh, which is separate from the operating budget and is typically involves large purchase items or repairs uh, to our buildings or technology purchases. So here is uh, the setup for this evening. We'll talk about our mission statement, our new mission statement that was part of our new process uh, that we went through last year. FY twenty-five budget process, the assumptions we use when we develop this, the drivers that were in the budget, the strategic initiatives that uh, relate to the FY twenty-five budget, our funding sources and revenue. Uh, we have a transition plan to full-day kindergarten for all students without tuition, which we'll talk a little bit about that. Per pupil expenditures, kind of where we stack up around area districts. An analysis of FY twenty-five, uh, we have the capital budget and then going forward, but what our plans are. So our mission statement has been revised and this is all part of our strategic plan process last year. Um, really excited about this, we have this mission statement hanging in every classroom and every room in the district. Um, Med- Medfield Public Schools in partnership with families in the community fosters a safe, inclusive learning environment, empowering our students to meet high standards, adapt to change, and become responsible contributing members of our society. So the process to date, we have a lengthy process that we go through. The school committee established the budget timeline earlier in the fall. Um, then the leadership team met and established some of the priorities for their individual schools. Principals, directors, and department chairs developed their budgets. Uh, Michael and I conducted twenty-one budget meetings with principals, department chairs, and um, and directors uh, to review their requests. Uh, then we, we met to review the budget requests and input. And then the superintendent and director of finance, Michael and I, met to develop the budget. And then we presented the initial first-pass budget at the December meeting, uh, which is always our initial first pass when we look at what, all the information that we've gathered through all of our meetings in the fall. So the assumptions that we made during this process, uh, federal entitlement grants, we level funded. And we, we typically get a lot of money, the ninety-four, one forty-two, our fund code two forty, which is special education, get over six hundred thousand dollars for that. Uh, we've actually started to get Title One money again, we didn't have Title One for a few years, and now we've got Title One money based on changing demographics. So that, we're looking at that to be level funded from the federal government. Chapter seventy will be slightly increased. So we are one of, and the budget came out yesterday, one of two hundred and twelve districts in the state that were announced yesterday that are um, level service, hold harmless um, school districts, which means we get the minimum aid of thirty dollars per student. That's all we get is an increase. So, uh, last year, there were a hundred and twenty-five district, twenty-four districts that got the uh, thirty dollars per student, and now there's two hundred and twelve. So the state is kind of pulling back a little bit on the funding for school districts. Uh, but that's a slight increase, which equals about seventy-one thousand dollars over last year's chapter seventy. Um, continuation and reduction of tuition for full-day kindergarten, so you'll see a couple of slides on what we want to do with that to reduce full-day kindergarten for next year and then reduce the tuition again the following year. And then circuit breakers, we talked about, will be funded at seventy-five percent. Uh, I know that there are calls by the Mass Association of School Superintendents to fund circuit breaker at ninety percent. Uh, but seventy-five is what we plan to, when we made it, when we made this budget. Our drivers are, are fairly typical in what we've had in years past. Um, I think, you know, eighty-plus percent of every school budget is, it deals with personnel costs. Um, so our CBA agreements and our contracts, our transportation, we're in year four of our current contract with Conley, and we have accept collaborative for our special education transportation. Uh, we've added in-district positions in FY twenty-four for special education. Uh, we have one in, in for FY twenty-five, and then out-of-district placements, you'll see an increase in that. Um, continue with our professional development, we feel strongly about that. And you'll see later in the meeting when we review our status for the strategic plan during the other agenda for the regular meeting, we've had a lot of professional development already this year, and we continue to be committed to that. And then technology, we, we have to replace end-of-life equipment and certainly our software licenses, the cost have gone up um, each year. So there, that does not change this year as well. So, looking at our strategic plan and what some of the initiatives are in this budget, maintaining our current staffing levels for continued academic excellence, rigor, and opportunities for students and supports for students. And that's really important, that's job number one for us to make sure that we do that. Um, and this budget absolutely does that. We have the transitioning to full-day kindergarten for all students, and that's tuition-free. Funding for professional development around cu- culturally responsive instruction, restorative practices, and literacy instruction, again, from our strategic plan. Uh, recommendations for increasing, increases to special education staffing, implementing communication audit review recommendations, and then supporting our capital budget needs, which are all in priority four in the strategic plan. So taking a look at our current school year in FY twenty-four, um, there's always three components to our budget. And lots of times you'll see districts talk about just two components, the chapter seventy and local contribution. Uh, but we feel it's important to talk about that other category, which is our grants, tuitions, and fees. Um, you'll notice that, uh, if you've seen this, these presentations before, that our other grants, tuitions, and fees is typically around three million dollars. But in FY twenty-four, it's up to five-point-three million, that's two reasons. One is we got over a million in, in circuit breaker this year, uh, which we weren't anticipating to get that much. Um, and also our food service, uh, because it is uh, free, free lunch and breakfast for all students in the state right now, uh, we still get reimbursed by the federal government. So, um, we are getting a lot of uh, reimbursement from the federal government that's equalling a million dollars in FY twenty-four, which we're gonna start to uh, put some of those funds into um, the capital in our cafeterias. We have old, old ovens, old freezers, old refrigerators, all that stuff. So we're gonna try to upgrade um, that in our, in the capital plan and use those funds to do that. Um, so it's just an important thing to remember, although our budget's forty-one million FY twenty-four, it actually costs uh, forty-six million to run the district as you see it because of what we use the other cost for. And then it's also important to remember that we also have funding to um, Tri-County and Norfolk Aggie. So, we don't have the Norfolk Aggie number yet, but Tri-County, uh, it's, it's gonna be a hundred and seven thousand from the district. And don't forget, the town also approved the building project for Tri-County, so that'll be another cost that um, the, the district, the town will be paying towards um, Tri-County. So it's not just um, education funding for us, there are other districts that receive money from the town of Medfield. So some of the projections we have for FY twenty-five in terms of our other um, opera, outside of the operating budget, again, we're looking at our state and federal grants around seven hundred thousand. Our tuitions you'll see um, are lower than FY twenty-four because of the reduction that we're uh, presenting tonight in kindergarten tuition. School lunch, there's that million again, we're anticipating that. Athletic fees at three hundred thousand. Um, various receipts, three hundred and ten, and that's things like parking fees, gate receipts, those kinds of things. Uh, private grants and gifts at two hundred thousand, so that's what we get from our PTO, MCPE, MMA, all those supports that we have in local organizations within our community, um, that give us those gifts. We're really, really proud of that and, and, and are, and are pleased that we can continue to have those partnerships. And then circuit breaker at seven thirty, and that's what we're predicting, that could be a little bit, we could have a little more than that. But right now, when we built this budget, that's our projection. Another thing to just talk about too is that we fund a lot of the FTEs outside of our budget. So we're, we're almost, almost employing sixty people in the district outside of our operating budget. So just to put that in perspective, if you, on the town side, if you would look at the police department and the fire department, they have forty-seven employees total for those two departments. So we're almost funding a whole department, so to speak, on the town, a couple of departments on the town side, um, outside of our operating budget. And we do that through our grants and tuitions. So we also generate revenue that goes right to the town of Medfield. One of the things that we've done in the past is, and we continue to do, is our Medicaid reimbursement program. Um, so that involves, uh, that's only money that the school department can generate, and that involves our staff um, looking at schedules and making sure that they uh, put down the time they work with certain students. And we submit all that information, when we submit all that, we get money back. And sometimes it takes a while for that to come in. Um, some years are better than others with that in terms of the federal reimbursement with Medicaid. But so far in the last, our last uh, few months, uh, actually more than a few months, almost a year, a year and a half, it's been nineteen thousand. In FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, we had budget turnbacks combined of a hundred and sixty-three thousand. So those turnbacks are at the end of the fiscal year. If we have money left over, we send it back to the town, that's what we do. We don't just try to buy a bunch of things and just try to spend it. No, we, we, we're all on the same team, we, we put money back and that's our turnback, one sixty-three, six eighty-three. And then um, Owen's done some really, really good work with grants on um, technology purchases. And uh, we got a reimbursement on that this past year, and that went directly back to the town, so that was a hundred and nine thousand. So, in the last couple of years, uh, we've, we've returned and generated for the town two hundred ninety-two thousand three oh one, so almost three hundred thousand in that generation. Again, that, that's only money that we can do as a school district. So, I, I'm gonna do a, a kind of a high-level review of the transition into full-day kindergarten for all. And that's just because it's part of this budget process. But I think uh, probably at the February meeting or, or meeting after that, um, Michael and I will probably do a more in-depth to kind of go through the process and uh, maybe drag Missy in too, to, to do that process too. So just looking at um, the transition plan with the revenue and what we're looking at for students. Um, so in FY twenty-four, our current year, we are getting um, tuition from a hundred and seventy-three students. And we have the asterisk there because we have some students on scholarship and some students on reduced rate, and we did not include them in this number. Um, so that's, that's six hundred and five thousand, uh, five hundred total revenue. So we're looking at reducing tuition in our recommendation next year, two thousand seven hundred and fifty. Um, and again, we're projecting a hundred and seventy-two students. And we took into account some of the students that um, would, would be on scholarship or reduced rate. So we've reduced what the projection is to one seventy-two. And that gives us a revenue of four seventy-three. And then further in FY twenty-six, reducing tuition to one thousand five hundred. And having one hundred and fifty-eight st- full-paying students is a total revenue of two thirty-seven. And then we liked, we, our plans, we'd like to have FY twenty-seven, um, zero tuition for all, full-day kindergarten for all students, uh, with two hundred and twenty-eight students projected that year. And that's, that's the big bump that's coming through, that group. Uh, I think those are COVID kids, based on the timing of that. So, uh, we have, we have a large group of kids coming through that we'll have to plan for as we go through, as they go through the grade levels. So that's, that's the overview in terms of the, the revenue piece. So if you look at what we have for beginning balances in the revolver and then the dispersments through payroll and expenses. So FY twenty-four, we had a beginning balance of three hundred and seventy-three thousand. And we collected the tuition that we talked about on the previous slide. Um, our direct payroll in FY twenty-four, the current fiscal year is four fifty-three. And then expenses related to full-day kindergarten program at fifteen thousand. So we project to have an ending balance at the end of this year, uh, at five oh eight, eight thirty-one. So in the next couple of years, what we're gonna start to do is um, remove teachers and, remove teachers out of the revolving account and put them in the operating budget, which is why you'll see the numbers on direct payroll go down each year. But those now will go into the ru- into the actual budget. So that will increase on the operating side, but decrease on the revolving side. Um, our plan is to keep um, as many, right now, we're paying six teaching assistants out of the revolving account for kindergarten. Our plan is to keep them in the revolving account as long as we can. So the, the push right now for the next three years would be to slowly move the teachers out of revolving and put them into the operating, um, but keep the teaching assistants in as long as we can. So we'll still have tuition for preschool and um, you know, we'll have to take a look at what the, the tuition rates are for that in the, in the future. Uh, but that's, that's kind of a quick overview. And again, I think we'll, we'll probably spend a lot more time on this in either February or March that we'll go into real detail so you can take a look at, at what it looks like. But this was the high-level overview to make sure that you understand how it fits into the, the FY twenty-five budget. So we always take a look at the aerial, area per pupil expenditures. Um, and this is a way that the state allows apples-to-apples comparisons uh, of school districts. So you get a chance to see, it, this is what everyone spends on every cent on education. Um, and you'll see where we are right now. So, um, we're at eighteen thousand seven sixty-nine. And um, you know, the average is a little over twenty thousand in the state. So just to put it in perspective, if we were spending the average per pupil, that our budget would be three-point-three million more. So we're still under the state average in per pupil expenditure. And if you look at some of our neighbors, we're lower uh, spending than Millis, Foxborough, Norwood, Sherburne, Westwood, Needham, Dedham, Dover, Dover's spending, you know, almost seven thousand more for kids, so. Um, that, that certainly adds up, and, and I know we've had this conversation before. Uh, we're in much better shape than we were years ago. I think years ago, we were really, really below a lot of districts, but we've made, we've made some gains in that area. Uh, but we're still, you know, compared to other districts, uh, a lot lower and, and below the state average. So I'm gonna go through the analysis a bit and, and do by, go by um, buildings, um, and, and overview of the entire budget. So looking at budget areas, student services, uh, directs, district services, excuse me, and policy administration. Um, you'll see one of the biggest budget drivers we have here, um, student services, we're increase of sixteen to, sixteen-point-two percent or a change of over five hundred thousand dollars. Um, district and policy administration, um, three-point-five and five-point-seven. The policy administration is a reclassification of a position that was in student services before that has been reclassified into policy administration, that's a special education position. So that reclassification had it jump up a bit. Let's take a look at student services. Um, you'll see pretty, pretty standard costs in terms of our district-wide staff, um, our support staff. And the out-of-district tuition um, is something that is really been a, a budget driver for us. Uh, we've done a really good job, and Mary and her team have done an unbelievable job with um, developing programs in district and keeping kids here. But I think there's, there's just sometimes we cannot provide what a student needs, and we need to find an alternative placement. And that's kind of where we're at right now with some students. So, um, we're looking at out-of-district tuition at one-point-two million for FY twenty-five, um, which is, you know, really an increase of over half, about half a million dollars for over this year. Uh, district services, um, looking at our district-wide staff, maintenance staff, et cetera. Um, again, this is some of the, the stuff that DESI has us, we have the maintenance and summer help in the same classification as our research and development. Um, our teacher retirement and sick leave buyback, we have money in there. So, um, teachers that have, that are grandfathered into the contract, if they have sick leave, they can purchase some of their um, their sick leave back when they retire. Not all can do that, but teachers that have been here a while can do that. Um, so supplies and equipment, et cetera, it's, in general, education transportation is the big driver there. So that's the one-point-six million. Um, so that's, that's our, our general education, transportation, and that also includes the late bus. So the late bus has been in, in operation for two years in Medfield. And um, you know, we, we feel like that's a real equity issue for kids and something that we've wanted to do for a long time. So we feel it's important to keep that in there. Uh, right now, we have a ridership that ranges from five to fifteen kids, depending. Uh, some days you'll have fourteen or fifteen, some days you'll have three kids on there. Uh, but it really does provide that, that equalizer for kids that maybe couldn't stay after for extra help or um, couldn't stay after for uh, theater practice, um, or because they just couldn't do it. Uh, now this allows them to do that. And we're looking at a cost uh, of that for uh, ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, we think it's important for those children to have that, so we, we put that in the budget. We've, we've had two years of it now paid through the federal grant ESAR, and now that has made its way into our general education budget. Um, policy and administration, uh, you'll see what uh, typical in here, our legal fees, central office staff, our memberships to our collaborators, uh, school committee expenses, district-wide PD, et cetera. Um, and then, again, textbooks finds its way in there because that's the way DESI has us organized. So looking at the summary by school, um, I just wanna highlight a couple of things. You'll see that uh, Memorial is at two-point-eight increase and Blake is at two-point-oh. And that's because they have retirements in those two schools. So most of the increases you'll see with it by school are based on staffing, since staffing is eighty-plus percent of, of our budgets. Um, so let's go look at it building by building. So Memorial, you'll see the principal's office, the unit A and unit B. Um, again, those increases at unit A, unit B are all negotiated in the CBA. Um, and then supplies and materials and utilities, et cetera. Only a two-point-eight percent increase there. Um, Wheelock, very similar, increases all based pretty much on payroll, five-point-five percent or a change of two-point, uh, excuse me, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Dale Street consistent, really close with two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand increase or five-point-two percent. And mostly um, looking at unit A staff and that, those increases. Middle school, you'll see the larger, larger increases in the middle and high school in terms of the unit A staff because it's just the larger schools and more, more staff there. But two percent due to retirements. And the high school at four-point-five percent increase, and you'll see the unit A staff at eight-point-five million. So total, FY twenty-four budget was forty-one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven eighty-four. The request for FY twenty-five, forty-three million, one eighty-three, seventy-two. A change of two million, twenty, uh, six thousand, two, eight-eight, or an increase of four-point-eight-seven. So our target from the town was four-point-one. Uh, we started off in December at five-point-nine-nine. Um, so we're obviously a lot closer to the target. I mean, we're still working at it and looking at things we might want to uh, reduce or change. But there are definitely some costs embedded in here that we don't have a lot of control over in terms of our special education services and what we need to do uh, for transportation. So, um, that four-point-eight-seven increase, it maintains our current staff and our programs and fulfills all our obligations um, to our collective bargain agreements with unit A, unit B, our administrative assistants, our custodians, and food service. Adds two-point FTE positions, and we added one and a half FTE in um, FY twenty-four after annual town meeting due to student needs. So we had students that needed some additional supports, and we were able to add those in after annual town meeting. So that was a, a one-point-five FTE total. Increases supplies by thirty-five thousand, increases transportation by ninety-four. Again, ten of that ninety-four is the late bus. Increases out-of-district tuition by four fifty-nine, increases our technology equipment by twenty-seven thousand. So this is the analysis of the increase. So our teachers, unit A, steps, lanes, increases in longevity, nine-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. Teaching assistant increase forty-three thousand. You have a point-five assistant athletic director that was paid by, by ESAR the last two years in the budget at thirty-one thousand. Um, additional teaching assistant, Memorial and Wheelock, um, each one of those at point-five at eighteen thousand. And we have an ed-team leader um, at Wheelock, so this is an interesting one. So when Mary did her projections over the years, um, we, we didn't think we were gonna need this position because we had, when she did her projections, we were still kind of in the running for the Dale Street School and the campus setting. So, um, that ed-team leader was going to work in the Wheelock School in the new Dale Street School, so we wouldn't have to have a different person in there. But, um, you know, Mary has, we've held on to it for the last couple of years, and Mary is, is, is adamant with us that it, we need to have a point-five ed-team leader at Wheelock to support, which wouldn't have been there if we had the, this, the uh, building had passed. Um, and then staff not in unit A or unit B, so the steps and increases, so those are other unions and non-union folks. The increase is two-point, excuse me, two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, and then special ed, education tuitions at four fifty-eight. The other district services, uh, supplies, we said before, thirty-four, tech and equipment twenty-seven. Again, transportation with ten thousand of that being the late bus. Just another view of the distribution, that we always put up a pie chart just to kind of see the distribution um, over the district. And then there are additional positions that were, were asked for by the principals, directors, and/or department chairs that did not make it in the FY twenty-five budget, at least this, this version of it. Uh, one full-time adjustment counselor at Dale Street, um, one mass specialist at Dale Street, a point-five ETLs at Memorial, so we did add the one for uh, Wheelock but not Memorial. Uh, one-point-oh behavior therapist at Memorial, one-point-oh building sub at Blake, point-two mass specialist at Blake, and that's just bringing someone who's point-eight to full-time. Uh, point-four wellness teacher at the high school, we reduced that a couple of s- budgets ago and haven't replaced that. And then a point-five administrative assistant in the district. When I first got to, to Medfield, there was a full-time secretary in the curriculum slash um, instruction office. And we don't have anyone in there right now, so we've, although it didn't make it in this budget, we'd really like to get someone in there part-time to um, help out with the work that Christine does. So those are not in this version of the budget. Um, and then capital expenses, so the things that we've done in FY twenty-four, um, in, at Blake, we did the auditorium renovation. Blake, we did the auditorium renovation, a hundred and twenty-five thousand out of capital. We also got support from MCP on that, which was really awesome. Gymnasium roof replacement at the high school, that roof has been leaking forever. We finally got that done over the summer. Asbestos flooring and abatement replacement at Dale Street. The fire alarm panel had some issues here at the high school and the chief asked us to make sure that we had that fixed over the summer. So we did that. So that was additional twenty-five thousand. And then ceiling tile replacement and lighting upgrade at Dale Street. So looking at FY twenty-five, what we're trying to do is, we had the tennis court repairs at the high school, excuse me, on the FY twenty-four, but it, they were backed up and they couldn't get that done, the, the company that does that. We have to look at boiler replacement at Blake. Fortunately, that's gonna be paid for in portion by the Green Communities Grant. We洛克 to replace the pneumatic temp controls, also being paid somewhat, somewhat with a Green Communities Grant. Resurfacing of the parking lots here at the high school and the middle school, they haven't been done in a long, long time. So we need to kind of get that done. They're looking, they're looking ragged and starting to break down. And then again, more Dale, more Dale Street stuff with the ceiling tiles, the carpet and asbestos abatement that we have, we have that ongoing every single year in capital because it needs to be done. So we don't know when, when or if we'll ever get new buildings. We wanna make sure that we can continue to make that a good environment for, for our kids and for our teachers. So that's where we are with capital. Going forward with our budget, we have four additional school committee meetings to have conversations about this and make changes. You'll see February, two in March and one in April. The warrant committee will be meeting with us in February. And Ed's here tonight and he thinks it might be the thirteenth. We gotta check our schedules for that. And then town meeting, the final budget on May sixth. And when we get to that number, it's never official budget until it's voted at town meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions from the committee and then certainly open it up for the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's a lot of work and over there.
So just the most recent, you just said something about the school parking lots resurfacing?
Yes.
I know they're kind of tough out there. Would we do that before we did the solar? Because wouldn't that be affected with like the canopies and stuff?
So we just got a report, was it yesterday, Michael, on the solar? Yesterday on the solar for the high school. So we're looking at doing solar at Blake right now and then at Memorial. We, we cannot do the solar project at Blake anymore by the parking lots.
Just the roof?
Just the one on the roof because the Rose, I'm gonna say, what is it? Rose? Rose Bay project. Yeah. So the Rose Bay project is happening apparently. And then that, that actually goes into our parking lot area, so we're not gonna be able to do that. So we have to kind of figure that all out too because what they sent us, it looks like some of our parking lot in our driveway is in their land, on their land. So we have to kind of figure that out too. But that, yeah, so we wouldn't do anything, we have to dig for that, will you answer your question? We wouldn't resurface that yet.
So while we're talking about solar, because I was curious, looking at kind of like the electricity and the utilities, what, when we're able to get solar, where, what are we anticipating like percentage or actual numbers in regards to the decrease that we'll see for some of these bills?
So the way it's structured is that...
Michael, you might want to go to the, over there just to have a microphone.
I don't have the contract on me.
Okay.
But the way it's structured is that there's a set amount that you're paying for kilowatts that you're gonna be locked into for a period of time.
Right.
That cost is gonna be slightly more than what we're covering the pain. So the, the savings is within that twenty-year span, not immediately within that one year.
Okay. So the cost that we'll see is gonna be over time, but won't really affect any of the budgets over the next like two, three, four years?
Correct, because we're gonna take that into consideration.
You'll also notice there's been reductions in electricity and, and utilities. Michael really went through and looked at some of our historical usage and was able to reduce some of the budget, which is great. As long as the weather cooperates.
I have, if, if you're all thinking of, some of my questions are more, I'll call them nit-type, just, just to make sure, and then a couple are a little more meaty. Early, you just said, I want to make sure you understand that, you mentioned the assumption is the circuit breaker at seventy-five percent.
Right.
And then you referenced ninety percent.
So MASs is lobbying the state right now for ninety percent. I'm sure MASc would be doing the same. But that, we're, we're assuming it's gonna be seventy-five because that's what, actually what the governor had in her budget yesterday was seventy-five. I just know that they're lobbying hard for ninety percent, just like they're also lobbying hard for one twenty-five per student increase instead of a thirty. So if they get more than, that'd be helpful for us, but we're not counting on it.
So that, that may be an incremental roughly hundred forty K. Is that, like, that would be twenty percent of the seven thirty?
Yeah, we're not, we're not counting on it. I'm just saying they're lobbying, that's all. Yeah.
Yeah, no.
It's, it's a form of Fed system, so we, we have to look at individual students on IEPs and they take their cost, back out what they call the, a, a set foundation budget that they set for that tuition and then take ninety percent on top of that.
Michael, can you just speak in the microphone? I know people want to hear it because I, I can't hear you either.
So when it comes to circuit breaker and Mary does all of it, what happens is they don't do it on a specific total. They do it on an individual basis depending on a child's IEP. So we, Mary has to take in consideration all the costs that are associated with that child. They back out what they have as a base tuition, which I think it's gonna be fifty-seven-two, I think. I'm not a hundred percent sure. You back that out and then they take ninety percent of what that total is for that individual child. And then, so you have to do that for all students and then you get a total.
Okay. And if nothing else, the thought is you're, you're being conservative on the...
Right, absolutely.
And I, I forget, is circuit breaker what you, you receive it and then you actually apply it the following year?
The following year.
Okay.
Can I ask, can I jump in, Tim?
Yes, yeah, definitely. This was letting you kind of digest and...
So, right, it looks like for the circuit breaker, the school, the kids that we need to send, right, that we can't educate in our system, like it's twenty this year and then you're projecting going down to eighteen for next year. I guess, you know, that's an estimate based on who you know is already in the district, but how are we planning for kids who may move in that we're not accounting for? Do we have like an excess fund or are we...
So we, we typically have a carryover circuit breaker, just for that particular case if something happens. We, Michael really likes to carry over a lot. He really, we, we talk about it all the time. He, he wants to have a reserve so that if that does happen where someone moves in or if there's someone that's not on the radar that needs additional services that percolates up, then we'll, we'll have the, the funds to provide the services the child needs. So yeah, we definitely carry over and have, you can carry over a circuit breaker one year. You can't do it in perpetuity. It's one year, that's it. If, if you, if you have a circuit breaker for FY twenty-five, you can carry it over the next year, but you have to spend all that.
That, the next year.
Or you lose it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we spend that first.
So I just want to add, those twenty kids are actually twenty kids from last year that we get. So they, we're a year behind in circuit breaker.
Okay, yes.
So, so the eighteen is actually this year's numbers.
It's current.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, that helps. Thank you.
You look at the history, you'll see, we look at the top of that page, at one point we had thirty-five.
Right.
Yes, we had a lot of students out, so we really brought that down a lot. I mean, it ebbs and flows, but there was a time where it was in the thirties.
Yep, I saw that.
And it's somewhat related, so I'll stay there, but your, like, your student services increase is the bigger, you know, one of the larger ones. And you're saying, you know, I think it shows one point two is the out-of-district tuition. Is there any trends that would say, hey, there's a certain service that if we offered, we may be, you know, better equipped to keep them in the district?
Yeah, I mean, I think Mary does a great job with that. I think whenever we start to see something where we have students, you know, multiple students that, that needs similar services, you know, one of the things, and again, I don't want to harp on this, but one of the things that makes it difficult from Mary's perspective and for kids' perspective is our structure at elementary school. So it's expensive to, to start a program at every single school if you need, if you need a particular program, which is why we really wanted to have that, that campus setting at, at We洛克 so that we could develop a program there and you could have that wide swath of grades of kids actually being in there because you're on the same campus. So that, that makes it difficult to develop programs. You'll notice most of the programs we developed have been for older kids because at the middle school or high school, it's, it's a lot easier to do it because you're at that one, one particular place. So I think, you know, the structure is, the structure is our structure. It is what it is. But I think it's, it, it doesn't lend itself sometimes to develop elementary programs based on kids being in three different schools. But yes, to answer your question, Tim, absolutely.
It's, and it's an interesting one because you put your, you know, tonight it's more about our finance hat and our budget hat and pay that savings. The other side is, it's not a finance, nobody, the families and the, the kids don't want to go out either.
No.
Right?
So I would say, a good example of that is when we had our extended program beyond eighteen and we had students that were going to our collaborative. And then Mary had looked at that whole program and decided to develop it in-house. So now we have one in-house and we tuition students from other districts into our programs. That's a good example of how we've done that in the past.
And, and Tim, the actual cost is the one point two plus the circuit breaker, which is that seven hundred thousand.
Okay. No, it's, it's, it's just an interesting to see it and it's comforting to know that, yeah, we're constantly looking at.
Well, for sure.
Where the trends, themes, is it, you know, certain school or age group and, you know, where possible, sometimes applying, you know, we're, we're finding that additional FTE. It may look in the budget as an additional head and, and it's, you know, applied to those services. Makes sense. And I, my questions, they were kind of mixed. Some were just more almost operating or, as I say, nits. One was, and this is probably in the budget book, but for Tri-County and Aggie, that's not part of this budget, but it is part of the town.
The town's budget.
Correct.
The, the Norfolk Aggie, part of it's in our budget.
It is, but we, we fight that every year because it's really not our role to pay that. But it does find its way in our budget.
So then, then that just shows up as a line item that we will see in the town meeting? Where, where does it typically show up?
It's on the line, line-by-line item budget you have. The one that's online, the one you have, yeah, it's on there.
Even though...
It's at the, it's at the end.
Okay, even though it's part of it. And the other one, and, and actually, this, this is related and I'll, again, circle it back to other members of the committee. The first, you, you've spoken one-on-one to me, but I think it, it was worth sharing. Like, the, the drivers behind the full-day kindergarten for all, just that, kind of what, what was behind that as, as that evolved? Because it, that's also a, you know, the budget numbers go up.
Right.
And again, when you put that hat on, you might say, hey, why are you doing it? You know, and, and then there's a whole other school of thought around it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I think first of all, what we've seen since we've implemented full-day kindergarten is the majority, the overwhelming majority of parents want it. But what we started seeing, and Missy can attest to this, is that we started to have students who could really benefit from full-day kindergarten, but it was cost prohibitive for their families. And we've, we've seen it for more than a couple of years now. And we have, you know, we're starting to get Title I again. We, we have changing demographics in our community, whether people want to admit it or not, we are. And I think that is something that is, was the driving force behind that, where you have students that need that additional instruction. They may not have gotten a quality preschool experience, so that, you know, it puts them behind the eight ball right there. And then we wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to be in full-day kindergarten like every other kid in Medfield. So that's the thinking behind it. We, we actually worked with the Medfield Foundation over the summer this year to get scholarship money so that, so that students at half-day could attend full-day. So we don't have any half-day program per se now. Everyone's in a full-day classroom right now. And Medfield Foundation supported those families that, that needed that. So we feel like over the next two years, we're gonna transition into a, a place where every kid in Medfield can go to full-day kindergarten, not pay tuition, have the same opportunity. So that's kind of the, the thinking behind why we did what we did and why we, why we're presenting what we're presenting.
Yeah, no, I think it, it helped me. It's great to see it as that goes. And one was somewhat confusing, but you talk a little bit about the teachers funded by the revolving fund.
Mm-hmm.
When we look at the FTE numbers, do, do they roll up?
So the FTE numbers in the operating budget?
Yes.
Like, you'll see one particular teacher in there that is listed as point seven, but she's a full-time teacher because she was always, she was fully in the revolving account. Now point seven of hers in the operating, only point three of hers in the, is in the revolving account. So we're, we're transitioning people from revolving into the operating budget. She's gonna see every year more, can you, so it's one FTE right now this year, but there'll be two, was it two more, Michael, next year or three more?
Three.
Three more next year from the kindergarten and then we're gonna keep the, the six teaching assistants in the revolving account as long as we can afford to do that.
I know you said we're gonna get a deeper dive.
We will.
On the FDK. I did have one quick question though, because we see right now that there's positions that were asked that are not gonna make this year's budget. And I guess I would be surprised if the need went away for any of these positions. So some of them might...
The needs for every single one of them is still there.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they probably will be a need next year as well for some of these same type of things.
You guys feel free to add them in there. Your budget after tonight, so you, you add what you want.
My question is, will, will adding the kindergarten teachers into the operating budget push some of these aside? Like, will those...
Good.
Okay.
You could. I mean, you, you gotta, you gotta make a value judgment, right? What's more important at this point?
Yeah.
And I think that if you're looking at, you know, you fund what you value and we feel like kid, full-day kindergarten is the most important thing out of some, instead of some of those other ones, you know, it's on, you have to make those decisions. But you can certainly add them if you like. I'll be happy to have them.
Michelle, can you just clarify that?
Right, so we're talking about right now, the, you know, some of the kindergarten teachers are being paid out of the revolver account, but we're gonna be taking them from the revolver account and they're gonna be paid from the operating budget. But when you stick a teacher in the operating budget, these asks right here are what's not making the operating budget, right? So my question was, when we bring them in, this need isn't gonna go away? So how does that, then we just end up with competing priorities, I guess. I'm just clarifying that that's what we'll end up with.
Yeah, I was kind of going, I, I was trying to better understand that, but it, it makes sense. And yeah, I thought it was pretty creative, what we did this year with, with the Medfield Foundation.
It was very generous of Medfield Foundation.
Yeah, you'd want to...
And great, great to work with. And Medfield Outreach, by the way, too, they were a big help with us that, with that too.
But again, invest in that and it also helps us, it's, it's all the way through K through twelve.
Right.
Right, like that, that's definitely the logic.
And talking about one of the things that wasn't asked for was the one point oh building sub at Blake. Do we have building subs at our other schools?
No.
We don't have that model, right? Like...
So we do it some. Yeah, we do it some. So the high school had the model forever. The high school had it, what do you think, Robert, for over twenty years? So the high school always had that. And the gentleman that was the building sub retired finally, he was retired before, came back and he retired again.
Yeah.
So we've actually had a hard time filling that position. We can't seem to get someone that wants to do that. So there are building subs. We洛克 has one, forget, forget who has it.
They have double rows.
We've, we've jumped around on it a little bit, but...
Well, I, I ask a little bit because when I went through the, the line item budget, is that what that's called? There's like, I don't know, twenty-two items that were, the twenty-three, twenty-three actual budget was very high. And I think just looking at some of them, like a lot of it was our, was our sub stuff, if I'm interpreting this right? But it was like, we had budgeted for like seventy thousand dollars, just looking at a couple. There's, there's more there, but I'm just having like four that were just, they stood out to me because they were very high in our twenty-twenty-three actual.
Maternity leaves.
What's that?
Maternity leaves.
That's what a lot of them is, so it's just something we can't predict, right? Because it's like, we spent two thirty just on like four line items I'm looking at where we had budgeted seventy. That's what that is.
Maternity leaves, yeah, yeah. And then we have to, when Michael classifies them, he has to classify short-term substitutes, professional development substitutes, long-term, so that's all.
Yeah, that's the ST here. So that's a couple that I'm looking at. And there's just obviously nothing we can really do about that, right?
No, no, we, we get surprised with that all the time.
Yeah.
Got, got an email yesterday about it, so yeah, yeah.
I like the idea of like a, a building sub, right? Because we have people, someone you know and all that, but like, our substitute budget gets, gets blown, blown out of the water.
And, and we deal with paternity leaves also.
Yeah, that's, that's new, yes. That's, the paternity leaves are new, so yeah.
My other like general question, I don't know if it's too general where I might have to sit down with, with you, Jeff or Michael, is like, of all this stuff, I found, you know, twenty-four items or whatever that, twenty-four items that were, we, we budgeted a lot more than we have. So it might be a more nuanced conversation, but just like, I want to ask gen- But just like, I want to ask generally, for things where like we're budgeting, you know, and I understand we only have one actual here because we're working through twenty-four, so that's a little harder. But we have things that are budgeted for forty, forty-five thousand, you know, forty thousand this year, forty-five next, and we only spent twelve last year. There's actually two like that. There's another where it's like nine or ten thousand, we spent four thousand, or even for like textbooks, we spent three hundred dollars. So I, I get it's probably too broad of a question, but why? Why do we opt not to like reel those things in, I guess? I hope that what I'm trying to say makes some sense.
No, it does. Sometimes they're contractual. So sometimes they're contractual, so if they're related to professional development or conference and traveling or a certain area, they're contractual and say a principal's contract or whatever. Like the forty-two thousand for the teachers and their course reimbursement, that mostly gets used, but that's contractual.
Sure.
But Michael, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, so, so there's, there are items in there that are in the certain union's contracts that are a dollar amount that we have to budget for.
Okay.
And correct, there's years that it's used, there's years that it's not used. But there's also, the principals have the discretion, so if, for instance, the textbook line item is, looks like the actual is lower, right? You'll check their supply line item, that should be higher, because sometimes they'll go over in one line and under in another line depending on what they need for that school or that period of time. So they might have budgeted, let's say, two thousand dollars for textbooks, but something happened that they have to use some of that textbook money into supplies. So they, they, as long as they don't go over within their categories.
Yeah.
They can go over within those lines.
Okay. So that might be some of it, too. Some of this stuff, I don't know exactly where it would match up. Okay. So leadership discretion and contractual stuff might be.
Yeah, we can go through all that, too.
Yeah, I will, I just, you know, didn't catch you guys the last couple of days when I was looking at this. Didn't try to.
We're hard to catch.
Yeah, right.
I just, I also, I think it's typically is the question I ask or somebody asks, but like my, my head gravitates towards the additional positions not recommended, right? And my assumption is we're being pretty creative to try to keep that list as small as possible, right? Like how can we run more efficiently? The, without doing the exact math, though, it seems like more of them are towards the SEL-related, you know, adjustment counselors, things. So that, that's the only area, like that's one area that I always say, hey, that can hurt. That can really hurt us for a long, long time or hurt, you know, our, our kids. So I, you know, I guess that, that's where kind of my head goes. I also just think, Dr. Marsden, as you go through this and you bring this forward, how does, how do you feel? How does the team, you know, to your right feel like, you know, compared to other years? Do we feel pretty good? Do we like, man, this was a little harder than years past? And I know that might be a tough question to, it's not as quantitative as always, but just generally speaking.
Well, I think.
We take ownership of it.
Right.
And then we, you know, we're going to be trying to work to fill the gaps. So I just wanted to kind of get a sense of what we're.
Well, I think one of the things that we found easier this year is that we were given, given guardrails by the Warren Committee on where to be, right? So that had never happened, happened for us before, so I think that was really helpful for us to understand, have a target where you want to be and, and we, when we started in December and we had all the positions and everything that was requested, and we came out at five-nine-nine, then we could take a look at it and see, we got to get close to that target, we got to get closer. And then more information came in and got us close. So in that regard, I think it was a better process knowing what the expectations were around that. I think it's difficult because everyone sitting to the right here wants those positions for their building. And I think that becomes really difficult to, again, you're making value judgments on what position you need and what position you don't. And I think everyone there made a really good case for every position that they've asked for. You know, they had individual meetings with us and advocated for their buildings or their department. And I think at some point you have to, we have to make a decision on, on what goes in and what doesn't. I don't think there's any nice-to-haves in there. I think those are all really good positions that are needed.
Yeah.
But we just went through and made those decisions.
I mean, it's interesting, the tech, you know, I mean, a lot of them are adjustment type or math.
Yeah, for sure.
Which is the hardcore. I know I've, I've asked a bunch. I want to appreciate the extra time. If there's other, I think us as a committee, we can continue to ask and I don't know if it'd be a good time to open it up to the general, you know, anyone else in here, if there's questions. I think the processes approach the mic, share your name and street and what your question may be. And do we have anyone on Zoom?
There's a couple people on Zoom. So if you're on Zoom and you want to ask a question, you can raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you just turn your camera on when you're brought over to ask your question.
Do we do the Jeopardy music now?
Nobody's raising their hand.
I'm just checking my notes. I, I was just also, I had a few questions, I was checking. So if there's no comments or no questions from the public, is everyone else okay?
There's nobody on Zoom right now that wants to.
Yeah, I was saying either, either or.
Chris, I said first, sorry about that, I was trying to be respectful of the Zoom folks who made the one. Thanks for tonight, I appreciate this. And I just wanted a little bit of a disclaimer, I just want to make sure that people realize that my questions really are geared toward a deep desire to make sure that we are all aware of things that we can improve as a district, so that we all work together as a team. We cannot tackle and challenge different issues if we don't know, we don't really know who wants that exist. So I just wanted to make that as a purpose. And that just goes to just really asking about, you know, you are sitting there as a school committee with budget books in front of you, the Warren Committee is known to be getting detailed information. Can we make all of that available to the public on the website? So that people can actually dig deeper if they want to with the numbers, instead of just saying the random line item documents. That's why I think I should have.
It's, I mean, I just want to ask, random? It's, it's the actual line item budget, so it's not random. I don't, I'm just not clear about that.
I'm saying random because compared to other districts that I've seen when they put their budget information out, they do not put out a laundry list of just line items.
It's not a laundry list, that is the actual budget.
I understand that.
Okay.
There's a lot, a lot of context, a lot of additional.
That's what, that's what this is.
And that is not on the website.
It will be tomorrow.
But it should have been, it requires.
That's your opinion, it will be tomorrow.
I'm just saying. Communication transparency actually helps people work together.
Thank you.
So my question is, I have a few different questions specifically. So why for the fiscal year twenty-three expenses for school committee are so much higher than budgeted? Especially the other expenses in the competition. Pretty, pretty big job.
Are you going through?
What was the first part, Chris?
The fiscal year twenty-three actual expenses for school committee were so much higher than budgeted.
Do you know, do you know what line?
Line one and two.
Line one and two. So actual was twenty-seven in FY twenty-three and the budget was fourteen. I'd have to, I have to look it up, I don't know. Do you know, Michael?
Those were some of the initiatives that we had for last year. I can't, you know, I have to pull the invoices, but those were some of the initiatives that the school committee have last year.
I mean, it's double of previous year, so it would be helpful to know why it can be increased so much.
Yeah, we, we can look into it on there. We haven't, we haven't gone in there. I think, you know, we're going through a pretty significant budget overarching, right? So you can always, I, I would like to better understand, double of last year.
Well, I hate just double what the budget was, so I don't know if it's double what we spent in FY twenty-two, but it's double what the FY twenty-three budget was.
And also it's the same, basically the same question for the central office expenses. It jumped from twenty thousand dollars to more than forty-nine thousand dollars in FY twenty-three. Helps to have an explanation as to why that was the case. A larger overarching question has to do about kindergarten enrollment. So questions, we don't really have, our, the registration won't happen for at least another few weeks. It won't start, right? Based on looking at the schedule on the website. And we won't really know what those kindergarten numbers are until probably at least March. So my question is that we've, we've watched how our projections for that enrollment, kindergarten enrollment have not been realized in the past. So my question is, what happens to the allocations that are put aside now for kindergarten? For this belief that kindergarten enrollment is going to grow, what happens if it doesn't? What happens to the dollars now allocated to that if it doesn't?
For FY twenty-five or beyond?
For FY twenty-five.
So if we don't hit that target number for FY twenty-five, what happens?
Yes.
I think that Missy has a pretty good idea of what those numbers are based on, on what she has for data, so I think we're pretty comfortable with those. But if not, we'd have to maybe look at adjusting what the transition plan might be, if it's severely lower. I don't know, we'd have to look at that.
I'm curious what kind of data is available to note to supplement the projections that we're getting from our central, from that.
Missy, what do you use for other data? For kindergarten, expectations for kindergarten coming in?
We have some census data, LibRAC, and then we do pre-registration, so we get a better idea of the.
Missy, if you don't mind, maybe the mic, just so if anybody's listening, they can hear. And even, so I can hear as well.
So we use our census data, our LibRAC data, and then we use our pre-registration data that is after the kindergarten information, which will be held next Tuesday. So we try to capture the kiddos from, like, have been on census data to give us a better idea.
Historically, just to follow on, I'm not trying to interrupt the questions, it's just historically, as we project kindergarten, you know, versus what actually happens, are we usually, you know, how close are we typically, the plus or minus?
I'd say it depends on the year, but.
Depends on the year. Unless people decide to hold their kids back, which, which happens. We can't control that.
Okay. I'm, and sorry, go ahead with the other questions, with the other questions, Chris.
Yeah, I get that.
Thanks, Missy.
As far as the question about kindergarten, what is the trend you have? What's the trend in terms of students being held back on kindergarten? Because I know that's been a trend state that's affected a lot of kindergarten.
Yeah, there are some years that there, again, it depends on the year. We have some years it's under ten and some years it's, you know, fifteen or twenty, so it all depends.
The other, the other two things that I just want to mention is, I mean, I love the concept of the late bus. I think it's fantastic to help provide transportation for students who just cannot come home and cannot stay after school. However, when you consider the fact that eighty-five percent, ninety percent of the bus is empty on any given day, I'm just wondering if there, other than working through the bus, bus contract, the firm that we have, is there another way to provide that transportation that's less expensive? And it's also more environmentally friendly, because when you have a seventy-seat bus that's sitting there and it's running every single day and it's eighty-five, ninety percent empty, it's really not a good use of environmental, it's an environmental issue, it's not a good use of that vehicle. So is there an ability to get smaller buses, is there a ability to use Warrior Van? Is there another creative way to get those, keep those children, those students transportation without incurring the cost and environmental impacts that we have with those buses?
Well, we do have access to a smaller bus, but I don't know if we have access to it after school. We have it during the day. So any of the runs that are on Elm Street in that area, we don't put a large bus up there because of the bridge and that turn that if you're going towards Walpole past Weelock. So we have a smaller bus that does that route. Warrior Van is used a lot with sports teams. We've actually have used the senior center vans before. That's been really helpful, but we, they use those as well. Park and Rec has many vans, but they, they're using those all the time. They can't have a daily schedule, so it's probably something we could look at, Chris, but I don't, I don't, you know.
I, I just want to add, you have to take in consideration, once you have a specific school bus, because that's what it would be considered, that you have to have two inspections a year. Your insurance, it goes up, you, you have to have the cost for a driver, benefits for that driver. And if you add all that up, it would be more than ten thousand dollars a year.
I think that, that when I think back to other previous school committee conversations about bus fees, I think that concerns me a little bit is that the accommodation is not brought up as the reason for doing an under-school bus. The reason that it was brought up is so, so the bus is doing, so it would be easier politically if the bus fees passed. So I just.
Who has ever said that?
Who said that?
I have never said that. I have never, ever said that. I'm sure you will, but I've never said that.
But I, I mean, just a second.
That's outrageous.
The, I love what you're, the original question makes a lot of sense to me, right? Like, I, I also do think what Michael's saying is, unfortunately, it's to make sure we can do it reliably with the late school. I, I'm afraid we would have to, we have to negotiate that as part of our bus contracts. What I would wonder is, we can't be the only school that is doing this with similar results. And it would make a lot of sense that they say, hey, they have some smaller buses, there's things like that to manage this. You know, like I, I think where we started is a great place to start. And I'm not sure where we're going with what was just brought up. I was confused by that, which is justification for bus fees and like, I'm not sure if that's, that seems like it's just not necessarily one in the, that may be a different topic and maybe we bring it up as a separate topic.
And then the last thing I just wanted to say was that overall with the, with the budget, you know, we just had Christine just did an amazing presentation, two presentations on MCAS results. Truly wonderful presentations.
Thank you.
They were fantastic. And she's so responsive, responsive about answering questions, especially around literacy, when you see all the low coverage about what's going on with low quality of early reading, early, the curriculum in the early grades. And Medfield was named as one of those districts that has low, considered to have low quality early reading curriculum. However, we are addressing it, because I saw the wonderful report that was done last year about all the things that are, that are going to change. What I don't see though is any kind of message in this presentation or at a school committee meeting that ties the budget to the things that are root of all this, who broke on to improve the things, to improve the gaps, whether it comes out from MCAS results or other assessments. I mean, our teachers are amazing, they do amazing work. And they deserve to have the support of our school, the school committee and a presentation that says, we're going to tie the budget dollars to the gaps, the academic gaps that we see, whether it's in literacy, whether it's in other areas. Again, that presentation was wonderful, I appreciate it. This is a budget question, this is a curriculum question, this is a budget question. And I think it's, I think the community deserves, as other citizens have said in Lexington and other districts, like their school committee budget meetings, where are we tying the budget to these changes that need to be made to close academic gaps? That's missing from our.
Appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I would comment, because we don't too frequently have forums like this. That's why we have a public forum. I think we're progressing in areas around setting and establishing clear goals, whether it's at the administration or school committee level, beginning to try to measure and share and, and report in a regular way. We, we have had some conversations around too. I, I, you know, like how much do we tie the academic, you know, success or, you know, however you want to call it, to the budget? And then how much do you tie the other elements that go in? We, we are, you know, I think we're, you'll, you'll see with, with the strategic plan, we're starting to put out kind of a scorecard, which is how. which is how are we measuring against that? And I've looked at that as an evolving process. I always think of it as if we, like, if we do it really rushed, it may not be done right. So I, I appreciate, I think it's good, it's a fair comment. I think iron sharpens iron, like, we'd like to see a little more, um, how can I put dollars to, you know, results and grades? You know, I think we are moving in that direction, you know, continuing to move, maybe not at the pace you want. And for that, we, we, we're going to continue to try. But we, we are, you know, we're trying to continue to bring that qualitative, um, more of that qualitative elements to, to that. But it's just, it's, I, I, I don't think we've used a formula historically that says this dollar equates to, you know, this MCAS result. And I know, I know you're not asking for that, but.
That's not what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is that you have, you have a Boston Globe major media outlet that's been writing for quite some time now, weeks, not weeks, about literacy histories in all the schools. Medfield has been named as a school that had low quality curriculum for, for early literacy. We have this amazing report that Christine Lein, and her team Lein, on all the things that we plan to do to address our good literacy gaps. It's, it's great. I mean, I, I list, I pull down things, curriculum changes, teacher, teacher population development, introduction of structured phonics-based spelling program, expansion of libraries with high-quality texts. I'm, I'm guessing those specific registrations that were in that report are going to cost money. And it would be really wonderful as people are reading these major media articles from the Boston Globe and, and they're wondering, well, what's going on in Medfield? From a budgeting process, it's so important to be able to tell the community that we recognize that these are problems, are weak decisions, and so we need to improve. And here in this year's budget, or the, the budget for FY twenty-five, here are some specific ways that we're going to address them. Simple. It, it, it's just, it's just simple, it's a great way to educate the community and it's a great way to address potential gaps. And it helps everybody work together, but we don't talk about this. I think with that report, that wonderful report that issues highly of the Midas test system, how is that okay?
Thank you for your comments.
Kristen Sinemini, four thirty-one Main Street. Full disclosure, a former member of East City, but abbreviated period of time, Rachel Rock. But during that time, I, I did spend at least seven months, a morning of my week, experiencing review of all of our bills and invoices and, and, you know, budgetary line items. So I, I saw quite intimately where all of these dollars go, which is not a perspective that a lot of other citizens in the community really get to see and share. And it's blood from stone. I was often shocked when I saw the costs of everything, the transportation, the, you know, communications, the, the utilities and eating. I was, was always shocked at, at, at those things, but also saw the due diligence that went into ensuring that we had the, the right vendors and, and had done as well as we could to find the lowest cost options without sort of changing our, our children and our staff. But as a taxpayer in Medfield and as a parent of an active student in a school, we can see every single day, the quality of the education that my child and our children are getting and the amazing things that the staff and the teams at the school are doing. I just want to say that I, I know it is a yeoman's effort and it's hard, it's harder than a town like Medfield. I mean, we, we pay a lot, guys, and, and we all do, and, and you're all taxpayers too, you know? But, but I see, you know, no waste, I don't see thoughtless work, I see very thoughtful expenses. And I, I appreciated the information that was shared tonight. I think others will definitely benefit from reviewing that as well and understanding where the deltas are and the differences year over year. Um, I think it is a little bit shameful that, that this is the kind of attendance we get at these types of meetings. Uh, that's always been hard to swallow. But I just want to say as a taxpayer and as a parent, um, I appreciate this, really thoughtful, and getting the questions I had were definitely answered. I think you guys talked on some things too. I know it doesn't end tonight, but just my thanks.
Thanks for your comments.
Thanks.
And your service. Any other comments from the public? Anyone else on Zoom? How does this group feel about, you know, are we prepared to vote? I know that, I know that. I'm, I'm getting with the program. Uh, yeah, no, I just, uh, before closing out the meeting, that's what I say, is there any other, based on the comments we've heard, any other questions that can, that come up? Okay. So, um, one, Dr. Marston, again, thank, thank you to you, thank you to Michael and, and your teams. I know it's a great deal of work. Thank you for those who, who are here and thank, thank you for your comments. I'm sincere, the expression iron sharpens iron. We, we do, uh, we listen, we try to, um, address and, and get better, which I think will continue as, as best we can. And with that, I think I, we can probably close out the public hearing. Do we take a, I forget, do we take a nomination?
A motion.
A motion to, uh, close that out?
I'd like to make a motion to close the FY twenty-five, uh, public budget hearing.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so we'll close it out. Then the, okay, and then it's between, um, I guess, I, I'll say it. And is there a motion to accept the FY twenty-five budget as was presented in the materials?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I think it's four ayes. Okay, thanks very much. And, but wait, there's more. Uh, not, not saying that, uh, thank you very much, uh, before we open that up.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I've been informed the presentation was already posted online, so just in case you guys want to. Okay.
There's a question on that.
Presentation's online.
Yes.
And, uh, so now I'd, I'd like to, um, open up our, uh, regular scheduled school committee meeting with other items on the agenda. So we'll open it up with the roll call, Tim Knight here.
Michelle Kirkby here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Frishella here.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, again, uh, we'll start with public input. Uh, members of the public will be welcome to comment during the public input through Zoom. If you're doing it on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. And whether you're on Zoom or in the room, show your name and, and address. If you're on Zoom, we ask that you keep your camera on. And, uh, in either case, that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So, uh, with that, is there any public input, either on Zoom or in the room?
First, I'd say firstly, um, just a quick note that recommendation for the calendar for next year, our school committee, to ensure that MCAS results are covered earlier this fall, closer to when the results are actually released to the district. Um, and looking at all the districts, um, twelve districts that we compare ourselves to with MCAS. Three games have had presentations in, in September, six had presentations in October, three had presentations in November. None of them had presentations in December and January on their previous year results. So I'm just asking for school committee to consider, uh, and please plan on, um, presenting those results in the fall.
Thank you for your input. Any other comments?
Um, no hands are raised online.
Okay. So items on the consent agenda, um, approval of the regular meeting minutes from January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. And, um, donations and that's, uh, my only thing is, we're not as light, it's not as, um, you know, it's dark. Can you, you didn't, I still want to get them wrong.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you don't, if you don't mind.
Sure.
If your eyes are any better.
Uh, donations, two thousand three hundred forty dollars and sixty-four, sixty-five cents from Grin and Barrett to be deposited in the Blake Middle School gift account. And two thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents from Shutterfly to be deposited in the Wheelock gift account.
Okay. Um, I always ask, I think I know the answer, is anything we want to call out of the consent agenda? No, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. New business, I think, uh, Dr. Marston, were you going to speak to that, to the Madeline Grant Scholarship Award recipient?
Yes, so every January, we, we get, um, the, the grades for the students that were recognized for the Madeline, uh, Grant Scholarship Award. And the, the grades are in your packet, they're not public because it's private for the, for the students, uh, but you get to see what they are. Um, I ask that you approve the release of funds, uh, for the Madeline L. Grant Scholarship, um, in the amount of three thousand dollars for each of Medfield High School graduates, Mary Catherine Benson and Audrey Callahan. I ask to approve as presented.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Want to seem to approve?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the town will release that money to them, thank you.
Uh, any other items since posting on January twenty-second?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, s- strategic plan update. And Dr. Marston, you're going to leave that?
I am, yes. So in your materials, um, as we decided in September that we're going to have a check-in in January and another check-in at the end of the year, um, after we, we try to plan for, um, what the district is going to focus on for the entire year in that, in that September meeting. So, um, I put together just an update on, on various, would you like me to go through the whole thing or how would you like me to do it? It's six pages, so I can. I can go, it's no big deal, I can go through it. I just want to make sure you want me to go through the whole thing. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. Okay, so this is just our progress update, where we are. Um, we started off with our priority one, the safety belonging, well-being. Uh, one point one, evaluate current practices to support student-staff well-being. Um, that was our key action and we're looking at gathering data, utilizing Panorama. Students in grades six through twelve, as well as staff and families, will be participating in a Panorama SEL survey in this February. Uh, it might stretch into March depending on Panorama's schedule, but we're scheduled to do it, um, a week after vacation. Um, promoting a sense of belonging, cultural response to professional development. On January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the entire leadership team and department chairs had a professional development session, uh, with Dr. Stephanie Pinder-Maker and Dr. Lauren Wadsworth, and focused on cul- cultural response to practices responding to identity-related aggressions, sometimes called microaggressions. Um, the entire secondary staff, six through twelve, also met with them, um, on January twenty-third for their release day session and really good feedback on that. Uh, move toward full-day kindergarten for all as a component of our FY twenty-five budget. We will share the three-year implementation plan that will provide a full-day kindergarten, uh, for all students without charging tuition. Incorporation of student voice in grades six through twelve. Advisory has provided many opportunities for students to give feedback on topics such as cell phones at the high school and homework at Blake Middle School. Medfield High School Principal Robert Parger has been meeting with grade nine students to gather information on, on transition to Medfield High School. In addition, Medfield High School has a new student advisory with our food service director to provide input and feedback on food choices. Blake has also been doing end-of-term reflections after they receive the report card, as well as Nat always doing a question of the week for the students, for them to reflect on. Um, align our DEI efforts, remove, review task force model in faculty, staff representatives of each school. We are in discussion of the best ways to merge the DEI task force and the SEL task force. More information will be forthcoming on that. Um, curriculum review is ongoing. The Medfield Public Schools developed a curriculum review tool and has utilized it by sta- by staff. Prior to the adoption of any curriculum, this tool allows staff to assess any bias in any curriculum that we purchase or use. Examine school safety, one point four, uh, reinstate SRO positions to collab- and collaborate with Medfield Police Department. The Medfield Police Department has reinstated the school resource officer position for the school, for this school year. The Medfield Police Department's schedule, um, permits the SRO to be on-site on most school days. And they have a schedule that, um, an on-and-off schedule, and so sometimes the SRO cannot be on-site. When the SRO is not on-site, um, the chief makes sure that a police officer is around and makes rounds, makes rounds, um, in the school area. School committee policy for cameras, uh, school committee is currently reviewing all of our district policies. That is definitely one that we have to add to our policy subcommittee meetings. Um, additional school safety professional development. The Medfield Police and Mass State Police conducted school safety professional development October thirty-first for all staff. The State Police presentation reviewed the most up-to-date procedures and protocols for school safety. Uh, Town Safety Committee, the Medfield Fire Chief, Medfield Police Chief, and Medfield Deputy Police Chief and I have all met, have met three times this school year. We reviewed and updated procedures around school safety topics, and we are planning to meet each month, uh, to go over any issues or topics that we want to discuss. Um, review school start times, establish a committee and process and timeline. The invitation for committee members has been sent and the committee is about to be formed. And a kickoff meeting is scheduled for the next few weeks. I think I put in your narrative that we're looking, uh, the first week in February for that. Possible recommendation for June of twenty twenty-four, and that will be determined by the committee as they go through the process. With community engagement and communication, uh, develop a comprehensive internal and external communication plan. Review practices within each building. We are currently in the process of working with a communications consultant to review current practices, as well as conducting focus groups with staff and parents. Complete a comprehensive plan, this is scheduled to be completed by April. Review and implement recommendations, um, this will begin upon receipt of a plan. Consistently communicate core values, create visuals for every classroom. Every classroom in the district has a visual poster that is, has our new mission statement, vision statement, core values. Incorporate core values into meetings and practice, practices, et cetera. We've included our core values in all of our presentations, leadership e- email taglines and all communications when appropriate. Explore website update, um, working with Aptige on our options. Owen O'Corra has been meeting with Aptige on improvements to the backend of the website. Will be doing forward-facing improvements to the website later this year. Homeschool connection, middle school, high school conferences. The Blake Middle School and Medfield High School have successful conferences in the fall and scheduled for another round in the spring. Each building had over nine hundred conferences. Uh, work with school-based organizations. We continue to work with our PTO, CPAC, MCP, MMA. The Medfield School Committee has representatives that attend each of these organization meetings. Curriculum and assessment, um, continually review MPS curriculum for vertical and horizontal alignment, create a vertical teams for ELA. The LA vertical team is created and has several meetings this year. They are currently planning learning walks to view the instruction at various grade levels. So having teachers that are, work with younger kids, see the instruction at the older grades and vice versa, so give, give them a perspective on what their colleagues are doing. Update curriculum maps for Blake Middle School and Medfield High School. This project is ongoing with the expectation that it'll be completed at the end of this year for at least one school. Establish a formalized curriculum review process. This is currently in discussion, is not formalized yet. I'm not going to go through the professional development one because it's like a page and a half.
Yeah.
So you can take a, take a look at, as I said in our budget presentation, we've had a lot of professional development this year, which has been great. Three point four, evaluate the current PK to twelve multi-tiered system of support practices and establish a pre-K through twelve multi-tiered system of support framework. A seventeen-person committee has begun monthly, and they will have an MTSS, uh, framework by the end of the school year, and Mary's doing a lot of work with that. Investigate and align pre-K to twelve social emotional learning curriculum, create a subcommittee to outline the review process. Subcommittee has been created and the meetings have begun. Dave Wordley, the Director of Social Emotional Learning, is leading this initiative. Streamline student transitions between grades and schools, continue to establish curriculum and programming to support the transitions. Medfield High School and Blake staff continue to develop strategies to support transitions, grade eight to grade nine. And the elementary schools have also discussed utilization of special education staffing that can improve services for students. Finance facilities and personnel, develop long-term sustainable budget strategies to address district needs, identify energy efficiencies. Um, the solar projects at Blake, Blake and Memorial are moving forward, and we are also a member of a Metro West Consortium that received a grant recently for electrification of school buses. So we had our first Zoom on that a couple of weeks ago, and then Michael and I will be meeting with them again soon. But, um, it was led by the Needham Public Schools, and they asked us to sign on and other districts as well to sign on. So the tricky thing is everyone has, um, a third-party provider of buses. So that's what we're kind of working through right now to see how that's going to work. Um, there has been talk of maybe Medfield being a central location for electrification of buses. Um, there has been talk of maybe Medfield being a central location for electrification of buses because of where we're, the other communities that are part of that and where we're located. So we're going to be working, um, with them on that as well.
Almost have to be done in conjunction with, uh, our friends from the busing.
Right, everyone's going to be a part of that. Continue the partnership with town leadership and warrant committee. The warrant committee and town leadership have been supportive of establishing a special education fund to offset rising costs in that area. In addition, the warrant committee and town leadership have been supporting establishing a fund to offset the cost of a new elementary school. Um, review MTA special education staffing recommendations. Some of the staffing recommendations made their way into twenty-three, twenty-four school year out of necessity. The FY twenty-five budget, um, includes an additional point five FTE education team leader to support teachers and students and special, students and teachers in special education. Um, reevaluate the five-year capital plan. Michael is working with the capital plan committee to identify needs for the district. And he's been a really, um, been a great member of that and also working with Amy, our facilities director as well. Address Dale Street through Medfield SBC and capital budget. The Medfield School Building Committee continues to meet and is currently accepting quotes for a comprehensive enrollment study. The FY twenty-five capital budget includes upgrades to Dale Street School. Collaborate with the town to establish new revenue streams and that was exploring establishment of bus fees and technology fees. This will certainly be discussed in the next few months with this committee. And then identify additional solar product, projects. Um, there are no additional work. There is no additional work in this area until the current projects are either in process or completed. So we're still kind of looking at that. There's other areas that they've talked to us about, but we need to get the ones that were, that you folks approved moving first before we look at any other ones. But again, it's a five-year plan, so in the next five years, I'm sure we'll be able to do something there. So I have an update for you in June as we continue to go through this. And I'm happy to answer any questions or comments or concerns.
One, before taking questions, yeah, it's a great update. We should almost, um, you're up on stage going through the whole, um, public forum and then going right after this. Maybe in the future we'll do it a different night.
Oh, that's fine, whatever works.
I was just going to say, thanks, that sounds like a lot of stuff. My, my one question, uh, which I heard, like, so much positive feedback about was about the conferences. And I think that's such a bridge to our community and communication, all, all good things.
Right.
Um, did anything come away as like, things we should improve? I can't remember if we talked about that right after them.
So one of the things that we looked at, um, and we've gotten feedback on both, both ends, is that we, we made the decision to, we had the conversation last year with Calendar, to have the middle school and high school on different weeks. Um, so we've gotten feedback both ways. People think that's great and other people think, well, it'd be kind of nice to have it all on the same day. So the reservation that we have is that if it's all on the same day, it might prevent someone that wants to be in a time slot at the high school, if they have a child at the middle school and, and wants to see that teacher, but then can't make the teacher they want to see at the high school. So we felt like having nine hundred on each buil- on each building for conferences was really effective. And we're concerned about that impacting that, so we're continuing to do the same thing, obviously, in the spring. Um, and we're going to recommend when we do the Calendar, uh, the draft next month, uh, that it stays on separate weeks. Uh, that was the feedback. The other thing that, um, was something that we, we, we forgot about and we had to kind of make some plans and adapt to is the parking for teachers and parents on the middle school day. Um, so that was something that we had to adjust on. So what Nat did is hit all the teachers and staff at the Blake Middle School parked behind Blake Middle School because we have the area, uh, right behind, it's almost, uh, it's, it's grass and pavement back there. So they all parked back there, so then there was parking for parents to come in because they were going in and out. So, you know, that and I think looking at the s- the time slots, because some of them were really filled and some of them weren't. So maybe adjusting some of that. And, um, I think there was a good success around having the option for parents to do Zoom versus in-person. Um, that was really helpful. I think families really appreciated that. So they liked the Zoom aspect if they were working or couldn't get out because of, um, responsibilities that they had. But others just loved being in person too, so. Um, I think it was very positive all around. And we wanted to see one more, um, you know, see it in the spring and get a sense of how that goes and then make some adjustments if we need to at that point, because we've only done it once ever, so. See if there's anything that pops up in the spring that we need to change. But as, as you said, well, it's really positive feedback from parents.
And the, um, the report card reflection, the master in the middle school, I think you mentioned. Uh, can you tell me more, like, what that looks like? And then I, I guess the follow-up would be like, uh, like, at younger ages, do they look at their progress reports? And like, reflect on them or is it just something? Because, uh, I just love that, uh, just personally, independence for all of our children. I think that's like kind of goal number one for me.
Yeah.
Um, but what does it, what does that reflection look?
So he, he sends out an email and gives, you know, kids an option if they want to, you know, in advisory to get, you know, feedback on, um, what they think about how their grades went, how their, their scores went, et cetera, on their report cards. So just gives them some thinking time to, to reflect on that. And, um, you know, I mean, I think that's a big part of what Nat's about, reflection and, and, you know, being really thoughtful. So I think it, it, it works really well in that, in that, in that school. Kids participate. And the question of the week is something he sends out every week too, to think about. He sends it to parents too, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's something that he really, he really values student voice, even at the younger age, you know, he really values that. So that's a, just a vehicle for him to get more information, like he do with the homework. You know, he got some really good information from, and data from kids with the homework, um, in grades six, seven, and eight. And now he's working with the staff with that and he and I are going to meet in a couple of weeks to kind of see where that goes with, um, expectations around homework and that kind of thing.
Sounds like all awesome stuff.
All good stuff.
Appreciate it.
For sure.
Um, one, I just, um, the follow-up from meeting with, uh, this chief and the, uh, kind of the police on school safety. So meeting, so the three of you would meet each month?
Each month. We missed one month, but yeah.
Was that new, I mean?
It is new, yeah. We started, we just started this fall. Yeah, we've never done that before, so.
Anything behind it?
Well, I just think.
It's a good practice.
It's part of the plan. That was something we wanted to do. We wanted to really create that, that safe, the town safety committee and the plan, so. And we have great relationships with, with both departments. Uh, we just wanted to formalize that. We, we, you know, we meet and talk all the time, but we wanted to formalize it into a meeting. And, um, we meet over at the public safety and it's, it's been really helpful. One of the things that we did, um, at the last meeting, which is really helpful, is, uh, reevaluate the rallying points if, if, if students and teachers need to leave the building. Um, so we're going to be, I'll be meeting with a couple of schools, uh, the next week or so to talk about the rallying point changes that they've recommended. They, they had a, a really good, um, position on that and think that it's, it's important to make this change, so. Um, that's what we're going to be doing. As you guys know, I meet with the teachers in the beginning of the year, go over the rallying points. New teachers, that's part of the induction program that, one of the first meetings we do is talk about all that, so. It's an important piece of school safety and they, they felt like we need to make a change, both of them, so.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good to hear. Those are some of the things that.
I just had a.
Up at night, just making sure.
Oh, for sure.
Sure it does for you.
For sure.
Oh, I'm sure, I think for everyone when it comes to that kind of stuff. I have a quick question about the professional development, um, where I think the six through twelve staff met with the woman about microaggressions.
Mm-hmm.
Would we consider doing that for teachers in younger grades as well?
Absolutely.
Because I think like micro, right, I don't think microaggressions start in sixth grade versus like fifth grade and, and how to deal with it. So just wondering if.
Yeah, I think it was more of, um, because MCP supported that as a grant.
Okay.
And, um, you know, Nat and Brenda had come to me on that to see if that was something we would support. And, and so they were really behind writing the grant and getting it forward. So that's why it was six through twelve.
Okay, that makes sense.
And the good, and they're actually going to do a community one as well. So, um, they met with the leadership team for a couple hours, whatever date I said in there, and, and the department chairs and had a really good time with us, great PD, um, really thoughtful, got us thinking, reflecting, et cetera. And then they did the entire staff and then they're going to do a community event as well, the two of them. So they were, they're fantastic.
That's great.
So that's going to be forthcoming. They, they think they're going to do it after February vacation, but that was part of the contract too, so.
Great.
But I agree, it could be pre-K to twelve.
Right, it would, I think it would be beneficial for everyone.
Yeah, the other one is just curious, um, but the exploring AI for educators and school leaders. That, that, it's a topic we hear about all the time, just wondering, uh.
So the entire DLD, or Design Your Learning, or Digital Learning Day is all AI this year, so they've been working on that. Uh, we have a couple of guest speakers, one from Google and one, Justin Wright from, uh, MIT, who's been doing some work around this. They're coming to speak to us, um, on DLD and then we'll do some workshops. We just started sending out information to other districts that want to, um, uh, have any presenters that will do presentations on that day from other, other districts. Wes was doing a great job with the AI stuff. They've done a really good job, so they're, they're going to have some of their folks come. And, um, so we're going to, you know, learn from them and, and see where they are. It's just, just around, like, I think everyone's using it, but everyone's kind of, you know, how do we, do we let the kids use it? Do we use it? How do we use it? And that kind of thing, so it's not going away. So we want to make sure that, um, our folks are positioned to use this really well for kids and, and making sure our kids know how to use it well too. I mean, I think it's, it's not going away at the higher, higher ed either, so.
Right, one of the things about AI is, right, like, what type of sensitive information is going into these prompts? Who's using it? What act, like, what do we know? Because once you put it out there, like, right, you have a lot of sensitive school data, like, companies deal with the same thing, but.
Right.
It's like, how do we be thoughtful around it?
So one of the things that we do, Owen is on a, um, a committee that we belong to at Tech that looks at student data privacy. So we have contracts with a lot of companies.
Yep.
And instead of us individually do tho- doing them with a, with a company, we have the entire collaborative and they have an attorney that does all that for us, so that we select, for Google, as a, for example, or whatever. Um, so that Tech does that for us, which is really, really good.
Yeah.
Owen was, did some, a lot of work on that in the beginning to, to get that going. Uh, but yeah, you're right, it's, it's a real issue.
Right.
It's a real issue, for sure.
Yeah, it's a, I, I think it's an interesting topic though, Tim. Like, you, you hear about it, I hear about it professionally.
Yeah.
You know, to the point of getting a headache. Um, at the same time, like, I think about your, um, DLD. Then kind of like, maybe even coming back in the spring and saying, hey, this is kind of our, I don't know if it's point of view.
Right, I think it's a point of view.
But I'm, I am starting to get, like, as I start to use it more, and, and it, I, I see that too. Like, you can use ChatGPT on your own, but you can't. If you're going to use something gradually, you need it to stay within the, um, firewalls. But I'm blown away. You can have full conversations about things that I, I really need now. And it's like, how it continues to advance.
So the state's actually going to use AI to do all the MCAS grading this year. So they did a test last year where they took all the MCAS tests and they looked at them by machine and then by the hand scores that I do for the written. And then they had those scores and then they ran them all through AI and the scores are pretty close, so they're going to, that's what they're going to do with their AI this year, so.
I mean, that's a smart use of AI, right?
Yeah, for sure.
It takes out human error, if it's correct.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
It's not perfect for sure, but it is interesting how.
Yes.
Close it is to what you're looking for. It's, it's amazing. So I think that's, that's going to be our focus at DLD, which we'll have more information on that as we get closer, but.
No, and, and there's other, any other questions on that strategic plan update? Otherwise, I think it's a great update. I think, um, the only other comments are, um, you're beginning to post the scorecard, I believe, on.
Oh, it's there, yeah, it's, it's up there.
Online.
And we've, we've played with our, um, what we had talked about at the meeting last week.
Yeah, it actually, as I see that, and just, just for you folks, I, I talked to Dr. Marsen a little bit. If you see, it has a, like, overarching, how are we doing percentage? And I said, wow, we're pretty high in that percentage to completion. Um, because it's, I think you were doing it, you know, started at the initiative level.
Right.
Uh, or at the priority level, is that correct?
Strategy.
At this, or at the strategy level.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's great as you go through, you know, each initiative. We're going to start scoring each one as, you know, started and progress or complete.
That's great.
So it is, I think it will be a nice way to get an, at a glance, how are we doing?
We played around with doing it with the key actions. So we did, we did play around that a little bit. So right now we have it on the strategy, whether it's progressing, um, start or whatever. Tim had mentioned, what if we look at doing it on the key actions instead? So we have, we started playing around that with a second, a copy of that. You know, it's just all, you know, data behind the scenes kind of thing. Um, and Neil is, is working on that for us. And, um, so he did, he, he did play with it, um, right after we met, actually, he and I had, had a scheduled meeting. And he did work on that, so we'll, we'll see how that comes out next week, you know, I'll shoot it to you and see what you think.
Yeah, it would be interesting. And, and key actions rolling up to strategy.
Right.
So, so it's just, it's just a nicer, like, as we, as you report on it too, it's a nice, like, like, and that's where I say, I think.
It's not as nice visually, I would just warn you, it's not as nice visually because there's a lot of lines, because you're doing every single line. But it, it will get to you where you want to go, I mean, as far as moving up to the strategy.
Yeah, now, now we can, but that's, um, again, I, I think it's a nice, like, as I look at the report, it's a lot of progress. Now, some of these, you kind of, we had an idea of this coming, but it will be a nice way to, you know, continue to do that. Uh, okay, so that's the, um, what about this Medfield School Building Committee update?
Uh, yep, we had a Zoom meeting, I want to say it was last week. Um, we went over, uh, requests for quotes on the demographic study. Um, we voted, uh, to send out the RFQ. The bids are due back on February sixth. Um, we're going to be meeting on Monday, February twelfth, and that's when we'll be reviewing, um, the quotes that came in and deciding if there's one that we want to go forward with.
Okay.
We've gotten one, one quote so far.
Okay.
They forwarded to the co-chair, so.
And what was the general tone to, of the meeting? As we got the.
Yeah, I mean, I think we knew we were going to get together on, oh, well, that was, that was two meetings ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I don't know, right? It's hard not to project there. I was bummed. I'm sure some of the people were also a little disappointed. Um, just kind of talking about what some of our next steps can be and how we can be making progress, um, right now while we wait again or figure out what we need to do next. So I think I saw on the agenda for our next meeting, we'll start, uh, I think we're going to be talking about, um, the MSBA and the SOI.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, community engagement and communications update. Um, this is a little more, and Diane, for you as well, a little more, let's say, open-ended, but what are, what are some of the different, um, initiatives? What, what has gone on? And, uh, I think Will and I, at least we had the, I don't know whether we call it office hours or.
Informal conversation.
Informal conversations, the concept is office hours. It, it was a good, it was a good session. We're glad, um, I think we've held, held those where we, you know, you don't always get people and that, that's okay. Allows us, two of us to meet. It also, uh, but it, it was some good conversation, I think, really around priorities, looking at the strategic plan, kind of similar to some of the conversations that came up today, academic rigor versus, versus other things. And, you know, Will, I, I don't know if you had comments, but I thought, I thought that was a, a good.
Yeah, it was good. I mean, the last one, Michelle and I did, no one showed up. This one, one person showed up. Maybe we'll get two at the next one, but I'm always happy to talk to people and, you know, it's hard for us to do this job when, uh, we put times out there and no one shows up. It's hard for us to, to represent everybody. Uh, but so to the gentleman that came, it was a good conversation and we, you know, yeah, it was, there's concerns like Tim said about academic rigor and some other things that go on and we're going to do our best to address them. Um, for, for other stuff, because can we do the other stuff too, like CPAC and?
Yeah, no, yeah, actually, I'd love to hear more about.
I met with the, uh, uh, sorry, the, the middle school PTO, uh, Matt, uh, there was nothing huge other than I, there's an end-of-the-year barbecue, uh, which I don't know about because I don't have a middle school yet. But if you want to volunteer, uh, they will need volunteers. I think they're, it's like at the, in the spring, but they're talking about even as early as like February and March trying to get volunteers because they need lots of them.
It's a big to-do.
Yeah, so if you have a middle school child, uh, you know, if you'd like to volunteer, please do, uh, because they, it's like all hands on deck. It sounds like a huge event. Um, CPAC had a meeting just this week, I think Tuesday we had a meeting. Um, so, uh, I, I don't think anyone was there other than the, the board and the parent leaders and site leaders. So again, if, uh, if you are out there, uh, uh, and, I don't know, have, have any questions about special education? Have a student receiving special education, uh, they're doing great work. I get, you know, a couple of months ago, I gave my, my shout-out, uh, Melissa Lowry's in charge of that, I, I think. Uh, nothing but good things about her, um, and the other people I met who were, um, heads of, they're trying to make parent groups based on disabilities as well as having site groups. So if you do those things, um, sound good to you, please reach out. CPAC has a website, um, but.
Have they got any interest in the, um, groups? I know they're breaking it out by like, right, if you're dyslexia as well.
Yeah, it's dyslexia.
ADHD.
Yeah.
So is anyone signing up for them?
So, so small numbers, like, like, one had two and they were trying to, um, come up with a date that would work for the three of them, the leader and the two other people. One had five people, uh, but, but so not a ton, but some engagement. Um, and I think their hope is maybe when they, they get the date for that, that meeting to happen, that when the date set, more people will come. So, uh, I guess all of this from me is just, um, if you want to volunteer, please do. I know, I feel like Michelle gave, uh, ask for volunteers or encourage people to get involved. Um, but so, so I guess I'm just doing the same thing. Uh, the middle school will need help for the cookout. Um, any, any concerns, questions, thoughts, compliments about, uh, special education? Uh, Mary goes to all the meetings, uh, uh, head of student services, which is awesome, I think unbelievable. think unbelievable. It was a two-hour meeting on Tuesday night. Uh, but so there are resources there. So it's like, my, my old boss said, don't worry alone. I would say something like, um, you know, just, just get involved. If you want to get involved, please do, because it's, now that I'm on this board and I go to all these meetings, there are, and I've said this about coaching for a long time, but there are a few people that really make this town go and they could use help, so, so please help where you can.
That's great. It's a good update. I, I also, I always think, even like you, you're saying on a couple of the topics, I don't know whether it was, whether it was ADHD or which one, two people's better than no people.
Yeah.
Sometimes big things start small.
For sure.
Right? It, it at least says, hey, let's, let's get together. And I, I appreciate you taking, you know, providing that additional support. You know, again, we're trying to make sure we, we're reaching out a little more into some of the, the groups. And we, we also are, we've been talking with Michelle and Dr. Marsden, kind of piloting something where we can meet with leaders of those groups as well. And, and a lot of that conversation, I think, would be contributing to this communications audit and how can we, you know, do better? You know, we, we want to hear feedback. So, so no, that's, that's great. Michelle, I'm not sure if.
I was just gonna say that our, our next informal conversation is virtual, scheduled for Wednesday, February twenty-eighth at seven, so there'll be more information about that coming out in the next week or so. That's what we have next for that, for our next informal conversation.
Okay. And yeah, and you continue to, to post?
Yeah.
And see that, which is good. And appreciate, it's really appreciated. I mean, there's a lot of work. We, we just, I see that, yeah, there's a lot of thought around it and it's appreciated. School start times. I'm not sure whether, Dr. Marsden, you want to start with that?
Sure, just, we've identified the staff participants that want to be a part of this process. Right now, we're working on the student representatives and I know that on your end, the parent representatives and then the school committee representatives. So once we get all that set, then we're, we're ready to roll. The teachers that I talked to asked if we could do it on a Monday, because their staff meetings are, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, so that it made a lot of sense that Monday was the best day for them. So that's why we'd schedule it for that day in February. But once we get the, the names, we'll just send something out and get going on.
And what's the rough number of staff?
Um, it was, well, county administrators, I think it's, uh, it's twelve.
Okay.
We had, we had extra two, but we want, you know, more people, the better, so.
And just remind me, what's the high-level expectation for meetings?
So one, at least once a month for meetings and, you know, additional work outside, whether it's readings or attending a meeting or subcommittee work. So there's definitely outside work that will take place, not just the one meeting.
Okay. And I think we were, was our total number?
Nine.
Yeah, we had nine parents, which we were thrilled, raised their hand and, and offered to serve. They gave, we, we didn't officially ask, but gave pretty good background here and there, which, which was great to hear. And I had a conversation at least with, with Michelle. I think we, we, we would think, and if you have roughly twelve on the staff plus students, it would be, around nine is probably a pretty good number. So, you know, we were thinking for those that have.
Are we getting worried? Like, are we just worried that it might be too many people?
It's okay. If you look at other districts, there's, um, there, there was a very wide variety on how many people served on this type of committee.
Okay, because we'll be looking at like thirty-plus people.
You'll end up in the twenties.
Yeah.
It's like twelve, nine, twenty-one, depending how many students.
Yeah.
Plus school committee.
So we'll be, we'll be under twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we take all nine parents?
Yeah.
So we'll be at twenty-one. So students are limited.
I'm sorry.
Students, how many students?
Because if we have twenty-one, we'd just.
Two or three students.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just think sometimes when you're try, like, it's a lot, but if you think other, yeah.
Yeah. I think people won't, they'll, you'll get everyone at the first meeting and then after that, you'll get less.
Yes, I agree. I just want to make sure we can like try to come to some decision in a reasonable amount of time, like we had talked about last time versus like this going on for a year.
We talked a little bit about, um, about how TLA, so that's who did the strategic plan, and that was also a very big group. I feel like they did a very good job of coming in with, um, an agenda that allowed breakout and discussion and then for everybody to come back. So I think that model would probably be very helpful with this size group.
Yes.
So yeah, that's kind of what we talked about, because I share your concerns there as well. I recognize that that's a challenge, but I think as long as you come in with, um, a good roadmap and like.
Right, and agendas and keep people on track.
Yeah, I, I kind of thought of it, I, I had similar thoughts as well. I remember when we served the SEL, like when that first kicked off, it's a large group in the library. By design, some of the agenda taught, like the priorities were a little more open-ended and, and that's what the administration really needed. But it worked really well. You know, quickly kind of tables, assigned to certain topics and then bring feedback up. I would think it would be similar. Like you can quickly break down, you know, have some conversations, but have purpose in mind for each month. You know, I, we'd love to see if we can come to a recommendation by June.
Right.
Right? Same thing, write first, rush second. We've at least thought, worst case, if it got, if we voted, it trickled into the fall, early fall, it would be okay.
It would still be okay for them.
So, you know, I think that, and, and I, I asked the question about how many, you know, I think it's reasonable that you have solid representation, you know, at or around the same, you know, from the community as, as from the staff.
Yes, I do agree with that.
So, you know, if, unless there's folks on the school committee, I don't think, it's not an official vote, but I, I thought that seemed okay to me, right? Like it, it.
Yeah, I would, I agree.